February the first, one of the years clicking right along. Probably be here shortly. Everyone had time to do it, Jim?
Yes.
We do have one change in it. After dawn, that's real six, that's eighteen.
Will they public work?
Is there any other change?
We'll see how these guys.
I can hear you two on the way through. And that guy, Mr. Barclay.
You see him?
Alright, any other changes, any comments?
No.
Go ahead.
Actually, under number five, Splosh, we do have Alex case coming forward tonight on Splosh.
Alright.
Technology, so it's just under number four.
Alright. Alright, our previous minutes, everyone had time, I know you had it.
I don't have.
To review, any questions, comments on it? Let's put that on consent again. Personnel status, flip over to three. Now, been a lot of changes except in the jail, sheriff's office. Been a couple in, couple out. Any more than that? Any questions on that? Well, he helped along, we're good, Robert. Alright, down to board performance and qualifications. Four A is resolution already as zero nine dash eighteen, this is appointment. Remember, the board of assessors, been talking about this and looking for months and finally started as a thing to found an person to agree.
Uh, jail force, jail force volunteered to serve, uh, minor tours.
So, he'll be on here a year, right?
Right, a year.
Everyone found that?
Yes.
He is from the district, who is that? I think it was a smooth road, I think I remember. Okay, good. Alright, B is severe weather awareness week. We do this every year, happened several years, severe weather, physical demand. Any questions, everybody found that? C is American Heart Month. We also live in this area. Want to point any questions? Four D, this is our Georgia Arbor Day, Arbor Day, that's February the 16th. We've been doing this for a number of years. Pretty big event, they, this sales, I know years ago, it was a good thing, her she finds several trees in there. L Wees, this was taken, Ryan's, and they joined with the Georgia Forestry. I always had one place that they did put trees in, so it's good thing. Special day. Down to number E. Four E, this is Optimus Day, Trenton Day, Optimus Club, this is February the first. Any que- any questions, I'm gonna have to hit those. Any questions on that? Alex, we got you down here. Did what? Yeah.
Would you say that louder?
Yeah, we're moving to five.
Five hours, how many?
That's good. That's nice, that's nice.
They're gonna let me go first.
Rodney Rawls, serious from my new cell, fire department, he's the chief out there. Rodney, what do you get from that, sir?
What I'm gonna try to do is purchase four sets of turnout gear, we're getting them at the same price that we got the previous ones. This will finish up all of our certified people. She is seventeen fifty. A bit changed there, doesn't get us all equipped. Certified people we got. But if there's some of these not certified that won't certify, they're gonna give you the go to.
Yeah. And it's the same vehicle price we had in four hours, which was a good deal. Any questions for Rodney?
How much is it? What was the price?
Total value?
Eighty fifty.
Ninety-two.
Rodney, it says here, ship without including that.
Yeah, no, not a whole lot.
Last time, I think it was, they, it was free shipping, I believe.
I think it was, it was.
Now, I'm just, Rodney telling me what we've owed him, I'm sure he'll. I think it'd be a big deal, he was mostly involved.
Does that ship, I'm out of Chad Noggin. Damn, your beer shipping, you put that right. If we have to leave, if you got a child to road sometime, cheaper than that.
Retirement. Any other questions for Rodney?
Store real commission.
Okay, let's put that on consent again, okay? Let's go ahead, Tommy, you wanna come up? Tell us what you got on your mind.
That's all we have for now.
Buy and use some vehicles. We don't have the full bids in yet. But they should be around the same price as the last one, which was twenty-six, six oh six. For the vehicle and then the equipment, on the watch guard, the camera system, the striping, the office equipment, Motorola radio, and the laptops. Should be right about twenty thousand seven ninety-nine, with a total of forty-seven, four oh five seventy-nine for one vehicle. The other one is a K nine vehicle, which is gonna be a little bit more, if we have to have a cage for it. And that one comes in at forty-nine, six eighty-six seventy-nine. And we need to replace. Right now, I have five vehicles that have a hundred and fifty thousand, most of them right about a hundred and sixty. But they hit it this year, they'll be pushing close to two hundred thousand, so. I'm asking for two right now, and obviously y'all again about June, try to get two more.
Are those cars that we got right now, are there, I'm sure, a couple more Crown Vics?
Uh, all, all of these.
All of them? Okay, all of them, so that white, that white Crown Vic, that is about one?
Yeah, we'll have one more, but it's only got a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Is that the white one?
Uh, no, that's the one that, uh, that'd be Haley Smith's and.
Five, the five's get us completely, things about the truck division of the car.
Yeah, court services.
Yeah, I got, yeah, one of those is court services, that's John, well, that's Gary's, I'm not counting, I'm I don't know what's on his, I'm not really worried about it, it's still running, it's all that matters on his.
What's the total on the first?
The total on the first one, and like I said, the bids are, we set that two weeks, well, it'll be Valentine's Day if it opens. But the total on it that I have is forty-seven, four oh five seventy-nine cents. And that's based off of the price that we got last time.
Frater got the bid on it. These are, these are basically, you know, these are, these were in the swash. And we, actually what we'll do, when we, you pull a lot for other, we'll see if you want to go, and we'll talk to Gary, his might have way over that, we'll maybe swap out, give him a lower mileage call, get rid of that.
Insurance focus, you know, trying to get, and they getting up in miles like that.
Are you including the, um, the lights and?
That's everything.
That's everything?
That's everything, that's the computer, that's the emergency equipment, the lights, the cage, and the radio, everything that goes in that vehicle.
Yeah, the watch guard, camera system in the car, the body camera for the guys, we're quick when every car, a hundred percent to go.
And the cage, I can't take out the other Crown, it's in a Crown Vic, so.
The ones we'll sell, I mean, they'll take them to auction.
They won't be able to, just go right back into it.
I can't take any off of Crown Vics and use on the Explorer, so I'm on a split.
Most of the parts you want to leave, or sometimes.
Yeah, they, most of them go into the Explorer or, uh, some of them, they got the sedans, like Chattanooga's, they kind of split. They don't have, you know, some of the codes that we have, or the drive-throughs that we have. And some's going with Dodge trucks, but some's going with Ford trucks, when they got out, we can't handle those.
It's just pretty.
Yeah, he's asking, the bids are not gonna be open till the fourteenth, so, you know.
But we're, we're here, we can offer ours not to exceed.
Okay, last one, we need to do some.
Not gonna give them a check.
Right.
Yeah, no, he's.
Cause I put at the bottom, that's there, I put it right on, on that first page, it says, final approval will be made March first, that's our next report.
Are those paid out at one time, or?
Or they over? The two vehicles? Well, we pay.
Oh, the computers come in at night, yeah, it's in pieces.
But they're not like over two or three payments or something?
Oh, no.
Like years?
No, 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 we pay.
No, we pay as much.
We never had to finance our cars once in eight years. Which is a blessing.
Any more questions? No, we're fine with it, you know, like you said, around July or June, we'll consider. We can't leave them on the road, I mean, you get, when they get one fifty or over on pursuit, they'll be nowhere, I mean, you're just asking for trouble, basically.
You said forty-seven, four on them?
Forty-seven, four oh five seventy-nine on the personal, and then the K nine, it'll be forty-nine, six eighty-six seventy-nine, that's got the cage.
Thank you, Tommy. Alright. And what about the, is anyone here from the tax commission?
No, but I didn't, I asked them to come, this, I'll put this in here for you, for, it's called Drives. Uh, Drives is replacing the tax commissioner software, which has always been known as Gratus, I believe.
Gratus.
Yeah, Gratus, and Gratus stands for, I'm sure, this is Driver, Record, and Integrated Vehicle Enterprise System. Georgia's updating their system, and in the past, the state has always paid for the hardware, which included the, um, computers, monitors, and printers. They are no longer doing that.
There you go, Robert.
That would be a big unbundled mandate.
There is a bill before the legislature, right now, the ACCG is proposing to make the bid, but no guarantees, so, it either comes out of Splosh or the general fund, and it is not budgeted in the general fund. No, this is just specs, I was just keeping an eye on what's happening, so.
Work?
Yeah, we're gonna work with Alex and Dan.
Yeah, we've already got, we just got the specs this week, and some of the stuff she currently has will work, it's, um, Windows Seven, some Windows Ten. Some of the stuff that's there, that I guess they'll leave will work, and we've slowly been replacing some of those items throughout the tag, but it's all web-based to them now, so, we're, we're gonna do a good inventory, we just got that, Wednesday.
Yeah, we just got this, but you have to realize, some things are counting, and some things are staying, and they're, and they don't allow them to be on the same server, they don't allow them to be on the same computer. It's insane, you know, I'm just telling you, that's what, that's the state.
You see, what was the cost?
There's not a cost, we're, it's just, this is the specs for purchasing, and so we're gonna have to do it, it's kind of, I mean.
And there was a dollar, rough dollar amount, I know that was tossed around, but it was quite a deal.
Right now, it's just information.
It is, it is.
We just got, we got inventory.
It's just earned money.
What, five of this and five of that?
Well, his cars will come in till July, so we're okay.
Hope if we're lucky.
If we're lucky, yeah.
Any more questions, Tommy?
Port estate, you know, when they said they were going over there?
I don't remember, like I said, Angie emailed us last week, she got the specs, went and forwarded them to us, and we just started looking at it, and we're, I think we're gonna be okay a little bit, just depends on what the state stuff has got there, that they gotta take out, what we gotta replace, cause they've got that specific printer that prints on those forms, if the forms change. A lot of the state stuff, we don't have specs on it, so we won't dig into that, if they're gonna give that to us. But most everything she's got, at least, is an I five, or I three, or I five, uh, Windows Seven system. It's getting harder and harder to get them, we're moving to Windows Ten and everything we're doing. That's what I was looking into, some of the specs, it did operate on Windows Ten with that software, cause we're running this issue now with New World in our stuff, for NCIC, GCIC, the laptops that Tommy's just talking about for his cars, cause you can't get Windows Seven, it's gone. And making sure the software will work on Windows Ten. And, you know, like I said, once they get up, they're just gonna be promoting in, where the state's got specific servers, you know, T one back there, they use that, they're gonna continue to use that, once it gets in, we'll just have to be able to promote to it, and see how it works, so. But we're gonna get a good inventory out and see, and then we'll, you know, we can look at our, what the computers are fixing to talk about here, we've got, we can bid them, but we usually get beat by our locals that bid them right here, trying to kind of, they need to have Microsoft Office on it, they don't have to have Office on it, and save us two hundred and sixty bucks per view.
Just wanna hear your names.
Tommy's gotta come and bark in too.
His combined? Alright, what you got for us?
This is something, um, we've been working with the sheriff's office and the city of Trenton Police Department, I got that. Uh, we've run into this quite a bit, and I'm gonna go through a step series, what's your look at as a quote that we got? For electronic ticketing and automatic ticketing that the deputies and the police officers do, this is how we do it now. Tommy has an officer that goes out, and he has two or three citations from the stop, seatbelt violation, a tell-out violation, and expired tag. That officer has to write on that little bitty thing, three different tickets, the same thing over again, besides the citation that we're issuing. If they got multiple charges, they can, uh, it just has to keep writing, same thing over and over again. Those tickets come in, they give a copy to the subject, the tickets come into a folder, Howard inputs them into the New World system. Ms. Oliver, Kelsey Oliver comes and gets them, and Jan's officer hand puts them into the probate court system, and we're doing the same thing in the city. This here would be tied into our Tyler New World system to scan and do this all at once, a lot of agencies are doing this now. Uh, we currently do not charge an administration fee on our tickets, uh, we do in the city, it's around twenty-two dollars a ticket, that covers the maintenance and upkeep and processing of what it does to do this. I think Tommy was limited to a certain amount of time, we can keep somebody on the side of the road.
Did what?
Y'all have a certain amount of time to get stuff done off the side of the road, once you make a citation.
We try not to, you know, when I hold them long.
But is there law, you know, a time limit for graphics?
Try to get them back out there.
You're talking about the tickets and the lines that they ride on, well, can they not make the tickets larger, you know?
Not foreign.
I know what you're saying, cause I've seen, I've seen some of it, you know, across the desk, and it is, and that's one of the reasons, right, I mean.
Well, it takes time, and some of the guys may not want to write a citation, cause they're hand-wrapping sloppy, they can't get it in the ticket that makes it up.
They sign them, you can't read.
They gotta tear it up, and they gotta redo it. We present it to the city, and the city wants to do it, and we've got a price for everything, and the city approves, uh, the twenty, if we went with it. Just again, just this one that says Tyler, uh, you got the city and county side, and we're splitting everything a hundred percent down the middle, except for the license. Uh, the city needs three licenses, and the county will need five, and then the actual ticket writers, printers, and the, um, handheld devices, like a handheld Android device that will have to scan the license. They can pick a county citation, a city citation, or a state citation, they can print five or six citations, and it prints it all on one ticket. It will manually input it, once it's merged into our records division, and it will also manually push to probate court. Right now, all the state tickets from, uh, that Georgia State Patrol pushes to city court, and pushes to state probate court automatically. Everything else has to be hand input by everybody, by all of us. So, really, we're handling, handling the ticket three times, the officer, uh, records in the sheriff's office, and records in probate, to get them input to court.
Is there any revenue needed that's gonna get paid for this, I mean, it's for?
That's why we're talking about also having our orders to have the, uh, administration fee put on top of the ticket to help maintain this, and maintain our whole system.
How much is that?
Twenty-two bucks a ticket, it's what we're currently paying in the city, twenty-two dollars a ticket is what we currently pay in the city. Right now, probate, that's five dollars a ticket for her administration, so we can do, our orders to do whatever we thought, but we're, you know, just looking at ideas.
Hello, just software, I mean, hello of that.
Will last forever, this is our current CAD software, our current records management for the sheriff, and current, it's our main system we've bought over a six-year period. It's just adding another tool to it, we're getting guys that's taking too much time to write five or six tickets out, that sits in there in the squadron and writes it, they can keep them on the road more, it keeps it quicker. You don't have the manual hours of hand input, and we done four hundred and eleven tickets last year, that was handwritten, besides case charges. Now, you could be arrested, or you can be coming to jail, you can still have your charges, but you don't have the handwritten tickets, so.
And that revenue is, was, would it go right in the five dollars, or?
Well.
If you don't want crazy, we'll.
Well, that's, the five is to probate court, we can set us an ordinance, the county ordinance, where administration costs to walk the bill is right to.
Hundred and eleven county tickets?
Yes, that's all we.
That's just, that's not including arrests.
Like I said, we had one.
Traffic.
That's the traffic.
Citations on them, one officer, I think arrests, had over eighty-eight arrests, he's, you know, one arrest may have four charges on him.
Yeah, like DUIs, suspended, you know, weaving over the road.
But those are a one, what you call a warrantless arrest, at which we don't have to handwrite tickets, it's probably going straight to the court. But there's a lot of manual, manual input from the probate office and from the sheriff's office that this would eliminate, is, and also, we're wanting to, cities wanting to gear up together and do it together, cause if you look, there's a lot of implementation fee. If we went and done it on our own, it's a nine thousand dollar setup configuration. Uh, there's, uh, three thousand dollars to go into the court where, another three thousand to do the probate court where. The training and implementation and configuring, we're gonna split in half, and then it gets down to the license, dividing everything that's quantity to, dividing it equally. When you get down to the actual printers and the handheld devices and warranties, we're dividing because not every officer's gonna have one, there's gonna be five per shift, so you've got your two, your two day cars that come in, your split car, and your two night cars.
That's where the, that's where the.
They can stay, just, we, we do this with our MiFi's, you know, the, the guys got internet in their car, they got their computers, how they write their reports, how they pull up warrants, how they pull up everything, pictures of the folks. We have MiFi cars, MiFi's that they check out every shift, so, like, the shift that's on right now, they work Wednesday, Thursday. The Thursday day car drops the MiFi this, when he leaves this evening, and then Friday morning, when the night shift issues up, they drop their MiFi. Then the Friday day car picks the other ones up, and split picks it up, and they just, that's how they do it, we're gonna do, these the same way, we don't need to buy one for everybody.
Yeah.
They will check them out, just like Tommy makes them sign them out, so if they accidentally take it home, guess who's gotta bring it back to the other office?
So, when they're in the car and they write a ticket, it's gonna print that ticket out?
Get a printed ticket, and then you give the ticket to the, uh, to the subject, he hand signs it on his.
We even done a twenty dollar fee, four hundred tickets, that's eight grand, that is what they pay for it.
They pay for our maintenance and our, as you see them.
What happens if that ticket deleted, they don't, just not take it, the court that dismisses it?
Well, that's a probate, it's still a ticket, and if the probate decides if they pay that or not, not us. So, her revenue's back to the counties, depending on what that was adjusted as, we can say we wrote four hundred and eleven tickets, citations, but we don't know what revenue comes in until she supplies that back to us.
We're not encouraging, right?
No, we're not encouraging, but we're encouraging to keep officers
Everybody knows.
Busy and doing what we do, we're, we're wasting a lot of, we're asked to do multiple, these guys are asked to do multiple things, and, uh, tickets get behind, having hand input, and Kelsey's hand input, and we are in the city, it takes a lot of time, and when you're doing multiple things, it's just another tool to add, to keep the officer out in the community, not having to come back to the squadron and write five tickets in. Another night, they brought one in, and I seen one of the officers write five tickets in there in squadron, they just get it down and get back in, the, the deal is to keep them in the community.
Tommy, you know, uh, you know, officers at other departments that have something similar to this, anybody choose?
The state patrol, they got a, theirs is attached to their computer, it's a little, they just, reads a barcode on your license, manually inputs everything, and then you go down and select your, like, if you're writing two tickets, and you just select what you're gonna write, and say, too fast for condition, and prepared to maintain, like, those two would go just on the one thing, and they print it out, take a copy, they sign it, and then hand them a copy.
This work the same way?
It's the same way, it's just a handheld thing, you just.
No manual, the only manual input is pushing the button beside whatever you write.
You would have them the, the thing, they would sign it, and then you'd go back and print a copy off of them, and then, I mean, we don't even need to print.
Oh, it's like, I mean, it's just modern technology.
It is, it's just, it's electronic ticketing that a lot of bigger agencies are doing, but we're looking, we got a lot of manual input, and a lot enough people really do it, we really don't have a true records department in the sheriff's office. Me and Daniel Murres, every case report, every arrest report into his records division, and have, I currently do all his UCRs and IBRs, which me and Tommy both do. And I'm stuck, he comes and bails me out, but, that's our FBI, that's our GBI and FBI updating our homicides, or burglaries, all that.
We got a retention policy, we gotta keep these records for a certain amount of time?
A lot of your retention on UCRs, some of them are forever, some of, there's different retentions on different things, homicides are forever.
So, that would help us have a forward record keeper.
Well, all we're record keeping now, in New World, is electronic and stored on our servers, when we went with New World in twenty-eleven, all that stuff is electronic stored on our, on our drives here, and we have a backup drive at the server that we use every year for the whole government, sits down at the senior building now, gets shot two places, and a copy, master copy goes home with me every Monday, and another one goes home with Dad. And it's all we have.
Which place, along with spending it with the city?
Yeah.
That's, uh.
It's actually forty-eight thousand and twenty-five dollars, twenty thousand eight hundred is the cities, which we approved last month at our city commission, if, when I was coming here, in the Dallas park, is twenty-seven thousand two oh five. The difference is in equipment and licenses, only difference.
What sounds to me, I don't know how long it would take, but the twenty-seven thousand we recruit in man-hours that we're paying up costs.
That's the whole thing, is the man-hours that Judge Carter's paying Kelsey to man input these tickets, what we're paying, uh, Tommy's having to pay for Howard input these tickets, plus he's taking money for the inmates, he's answering the main phone, he's putting in civil papers, he's putting in warrants, he's doing a lot in there. Howard is busy in that control room, this will be one less headache, you know, when you come in, and, when you come in on Monday, and you've got thirty-six hours of, uh, new shift, cause you got deputies that start Friday, Saturday, Sunday, day and night, and that's, we call it our long weekend, there's usually a lot, I usually have at least fifteen to twenty case reports to merge Monday morning, maybe ten arrests. And then, if you figure tickets on some of them, that's how much more Howard's got to do, if he's got two or three charges, per, per case report.
This is gonna help him?
It'll help him, it'll help carry.
We'd put, we'd put Howard to him on all time.
So, we should put a look at, like you said, on some kind of fee.
Well.
Yeah.
We, with me, me and Don talked to Robin, we discussed it, we're gonna bring an ordinance together that because of the ordinance, we have to put for administration fees on citations for Day County sheriff's office to help incorporate this, we realized we wouldn't do it and Carrie's only putting five dollar service charge for her, that goes back to Day probate. And the rest of it, she would revenue every citation back, the, the administration fee we've come up with will come back to the general fund of the Day County Sheriff's Office to help offset our this little maintenance fee on the end will come into us at the end of the year, right now, when we have our Tyler New World maintenance fee. I go through there and divide it out between the city and the county and nine-one-one and Tommy and the jail, the jail plays a part, another jail budget, part of it comes out of the sheriff's budget. Uh, that's the radios, uh, part of it comes out of nine-one-one.
All right, any questions, any more questions for Alex?
This is not right away, it could be another few months for us. You know, it's not, nothing right, once we sign this and get it back to Tyler, then we got a schedule, there'll be some build-out time and.
And you're saying the city's already?
City's already proved their part, if y'all prove this part, if not, then we're not, we can't afford it because it would double, it would double the processing services and it would almost double the software part on us. Cause we both have to pay for a interface into the probate state software and an interface into the city court software. City Trent uses courtware and state prob, the probate uses a state software that they use, we have to play an interface to get that in. So it takes the information off the ticket and shoots it straight into theirs, just like what the State Patrol.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Alex. And put them, send it in.
That's one. Second part, Tommy has mentioned his cars, his other cars that we're gonna try to get between the end of the year on into next year, we put eighteen laptops in service at one time in two thousand and eleven, remember? We've got about the two that he's just replacing with his car. We've got additional five more that we need to get replaced, I've got four of them held together with Gorilla Tape on the hinges. Dell couldn't make in his computer, we, we used to send it back to Dell and have them warranty to get them repaired. Uh, we went to a third-party company that had aftermarket Dell parts and the hinges are breaking on them. They sit in that car, they ride on, you know, all these roads we get to and we need some more. We're gonna need computers before we need cars, cause these guys, that's how they do what they do. They see the call where they're at, they see where their brother and sister law enforcement is. That's how they run their tags and see the information really hanging on some laptops. We'd like to get some additional laptops to put in the remainder crown vics to replace the old ones that we can move over into, uh, the newer SUVs when we get. But we're going back with a semi-rugged system, this is exact same computer we've been putting in the cars for the last three years.
And they're holding it?
They're holding, they're made for outside use, we bought, read our laptops, we bought a hundred of them. Walker bought, um, eighty of them and Day County bought twenty and we had spares to replace when they kept breaking, we, we broken a lot because you know, them, the cars take a beating, as you know, and the, the equipment inside does as well. So on top of the two that Tommy's currently asking for, I've got a quote for either three more or five more, I laid the three, the five more in there, that's what it would cost us to get five more rugged G-Tech S-four tens on our current spec. And the docking station, this docking station's what keeps it safe, keeps it in there, charges it and runs all the info, the information through it. It would cut top, it'd cut the rest of our price on our new vehicles in June and July and maybe in January of the next year, if y'all do another. This would help us through, but again, we're gonna run these computers for eight, almost eight.
What's the total?
Sixteen thousand nine twenty-nine and forty-five cents.
Next, first, next, Tyler's boss. Who's gonna come out, Oliver's boss?
Tyler's boss, then Kelsey's boss?
Hell, I know, that's for sure. What, you mean we're gonna buy two and then three more?
We buy two with a car here and again.
What's the break-in price, anything?
That's, that's our lowest bid when we bid them out, like I said, when we get ready for this, we hit all our vendors again. We can't go out on watch guard, we can go out on these, a PC. PN strategy's the lowest bid, so when I get the lowest bid at what's the current price, I send it to CDW. DM and, and G-Tech Direct, a PCN is kinda cheap, I'll see what's the price on this.
Since we've got two cars, I wanna just go and do two cars and if we get three more, we're gonna do three, cause that's what they're going in, right?
That's what, it is, but I, these other ones aren't gonna last until when their cars get here.
Oh, they're not?
I got them held together with Gorilla Tape right now, I got the hinges, yeah, it's, it's pretty bad. All the other, other ones are broke, we, so we get us, it'd get the like the first three SUVs we had had the old computers. One of those was wrecked that we got for parts, we got two of them left. Some of your day-to-day night shift cars, the other ones that Tommy talked about, it's got these old computers. Three of them are held together right now with, with the tape.
But the docking stations are gonna interchange, you know?
Yes, it's just a universal, yeah, when we order the new car, we order the computer mount, we have a universal mount, it would save us that if you took the single list price right there, that's what it would save you one time per car as we order the rest out through the year and order next year.
What's your name, Robert, you know? Go around the table here.
You gave prices on cases of Gorilla Tape.
I'm on the Gorilla Tape. Tommy's off. I mean, we, it, it's, it's the thing, a lot buying twenty computers at one time, you, you beat them up every day, twelve hours a day, you know, and you know.
Yeah, for my, we, we got ruggedized laptops and they're the G-Tech showroom and they get beat off pieces.
These, yeah, these are made to be the beating, they're semi-rugged, it's not the full rugged, the full rugged's about a five thousand dollar computer, these are semi-rugged, waterproof, backlit, military spec, the hinges are bigger and we're just, we can't, I don't think we'll make it to June on the other computers.
Is there a warranty on these?
They are, they come with a
See it there.
Three-year warranty. And out of the time, we just bought, uh, we just, what we bought, we replaced all the cities with these two and out of the last ten, we've only had one that had a problem, there was no, it was just, it was something they fixed it right away.
As long as you can transfer them over to the next three cars?
Yes, we can, yes, yeah, it's, it's, it's a universal base and we've, we've done these in the last six cars, I believe, it's this same style we're doing here.
Talking about putting these in, that's very competitive.
Yes, we're gonna do that.
When we transfer over.
These two cars we're gonna replace now, those computers are broken.
But the new explorers come, will have the universal mount?
We order, we, we build a car together, I buy it with a universal mount that hit, that fits this habit desk, so all I gotta do is when the parts start coming in, they give me the universal mount from our guy, we get it. We take, we take certain things out of this equipment, we don't send everything up to our installer, cause we learned the hard way, stuff got missing. Little things we needed, like adapters, so everything gets gone through us for it, gets sent up to us and we keep everything here. Just what they need to put in the cars and me and Dad will finish it up with the computers. Yes, the, the universal habit desk will fit in explorers.
All right, any more questions?
The total dollar amount that you got, somewhere like sixty-three thousand for everything to go?
Well, yes, yes.
If you get off of Iowa.
Yes, and the.
Car in that, in that neighborhood, you know, the last thirty-five, underdome back?
Yes, thirty-five is, you know, we, we've been working on the new photography that we've got. This other, these two computers is, is our GIS computer that we use, do a lot of our edits and stuff out of. We have the new photography coming in LIDAR. That computer also does our merging for the case records for sheriff's office, it's been running since, uh, June of eleven, I'm starting to have some issues with it, it's pretty important to me. And then the other one is to replace one in our nine-one-one center. Another one that we did replace not long ago.
Okay.
Yeah, all this is priced through CDW, Dale or, and then Network Sync, which is our folks out of Chattanooga, they build them right there, they come in, they're cheaper some.
Do you want to roll with?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keith Cork with, Phil here?
We're gonna have him to bring us a bit.
Keith from there, our, no question, we're doing development authorities here tonight to give us a yearly report quiz of what's been going on and what's going on from there.
Uh, well, sir, um, as most commissioners, many people in the audience, they're kind of marketing on for economic development for Day County. Year two thousand seventeen, uh, we've really been switching our focus more to direct marketing. What that means is instead of buying print advertisements in magazines, we've been getting a meeting with site selection consultants or meeting with companies that actually have a project to bring into the Southwest. Some of the events we went to last year was the Southeastern Development Council's Meet the Consultants event in Atlanta. And then most of these trips, just so you guys know, most of these are funded through the Top of Georgia was, which is our private economic development, uh, foundation. Most, all, or all these trips would not have been possible with just the Joint Development Authority budget alone, so most of this was funded through the Top of Georgia Economic Development Association. Uh, so, um, the SEDC Meet the Consultants event last year in Atlanta. This is a, kind of a regional event SEDC puts on where they bring in site selection consultants from that region. They meet with economic developers, they discuss trends in the industry and you get a network with these guys. Uh, we were a sponsor last year, we're gonna be a sponsor this year again, um, but, uh, through our sponsorship last year, Peter Savelli, the IDA's director gotta go with us and he gotta, uh, we paid his way down to Atlanta to, um, meet some of the site selection consultants. In June last year, we went to the Select USA FDI Summit, which is, um, the US Department of Commerce puts on a summit each year, uh, for industries that are outside the United States looking to do their first foreign direct investment into the United States. Uh, we went to this, um, economic development authorities from across the country go to this type of event, uh, to, we set up meetings, we had about ten different meetings set up with companies who are looking to locate the Southeastern Georgia.
Let me say, where are you talking about, who, who?
Uh, so we offered, uh, last year, uh, for one of the four economic developers in one of our four counties to go, uh, the only one that kinda took us out was Spoke Cabin from Chautauqua County. I think Peter was gonna be out of the country, um, same thing will be for this year, we'll offer it up, we're trying to make sure everybody gets a chance to go with it. One of the local people from one of the counties gets to go to one of these events, uh, so last year at SEDC, Peter and Phil gotta go. For this particular event, Phil was the only one that was available for that week, so he, he came to this one, but you know, we do open this up to the locally economic development people so they can go and experience and, and get out, uh, from just the community and meet some of these national site selection consultants. We conducted a fan tour last September, uh, some of you were involved with that, I, I think Peter and Nathan were out of the country, uh, for the tour. But what that essentially was, is we brought in, again, site selection consultant is our primary customer when we're doing economic development projects. So we brought four of them in, um, they toured, uh, toured the region, they went, uh, over to Inuger, a lot of lake region. Uh, they were really impressed with that site and they got to see some of the developments they have going on there. Uh, we toured some of the industrial property around Day County, they gave us some feedback, um, and, uh, some of the private landowners, uh, they got some feedback from them as well. And then, uh, we hosted a, uh, a reception for them, I think it was Thursday, Thursday evening. So we did that last year and most of these events were pretty successful, we felt, so we're gonna be doing most of these again in two thousand and eighteen. Um, and I usually go through Peter, um, as my contact to let you guys know what's going on, uh, if you guys wanna know, uh, what's going on too, I can, I'll be happy to send on an email as well or copy all you guys. One other thing we did last year, so, uh, through the Joint Development Authority, Day County is a member of the creator Chattanooga Economic Partnership. What that essentially means is, uh, we work with the sixteen county region, three states, uh, Chattanooga, um, with the Thrive Initiative kinda came up with, uh, and we actually see more project activity, uh, with being a part of the, uh, GCP is what it's called than we do for the state or for the utility companies, um, they've, they've brought us at least a dozen projects, RFIs last year. Uh, a couple of those, um, uh, rather big projects, um, one of them came out of a, a road trip we did up to Chicago again to meet with the site selection consultants. It's a rather big project, we're still in the mix for. Another, we just got done doing a site tour of the public industrial park, um, they needed a rail access to, to a pad that kinda, the size of the project doubled as they were coming, basically. Uh, so they kind of eliminated that site, but those were the two most recent projects we're working. And I don't wanna get into site, uh, project specifics, but if anyone has any questions, they're welcome to contact me for those investment or jobs numbers for a particular project. So again, we're gonna be, uh, doing most of those events again this year and we're looking, uh, we're also kicking off a more aggressive direct marketing campaign, uh, with a company that, uh, we produce these, uh, marketing brochures, so, um, we noticed last year, when I say we, I mean, you know, me and the staff noticed last year that, uh, we would go to these events and a lot of times, you know, we, if you pay for sponsorship, pay for a booth, you don't have a lot of marketing materials, so we produced these last year. We're gonna be taking boxes of these with us as we go along, uh, so that's kind of our main marketing brochure. We stylized it to meet our new website that we produced, um, and this same company's gonna be doing a direct marketing campaign. They'll be, I'm setting up the phone call with them tomorrow to talk about what we want, uh, to be in the direct marketing pieces. But essentially, we're going out to eighteen thousand site selection consultants, corporate real estate brokers and that kinda, those kinda people. And, and a lot of this is, again, paid for through Top of Georgia Economic Development Initiative, so, um, just as far as numbers, I'm sure you guys too have seen the unemployment numbers recently, they're, they're down. I ran the quick numbers and, uh, October two thousand, uh, seven, unemployment rate was three point nine. Uh, October two thousand seventeen, unemployment, unemployment rate was four point oh. Uh, so we are truly back at pre-recession levels. As far as unemployment goes, uh, as far as the actual number of unemployed people in Day County hits near record lows. The employment number, the labor force participation rate is still lagging a little bit, but as unemployment rate goes down, wages tend to creep up, that's when you see more people coming back into the labor force. And we're seeing a lot of our industries struggling with finding people to work, um, so what we're doing now is also focusing on workforce development. Uh, we formed a manufacturers council, um, a few industries from Day County participated, um, as did others from the four counties. And, uh, we had a really good, successful meetings, uh, last year, it kinda turned into Manufacturers Workforce Development Council. But at the same time, uh, Georgia Department of Labor was getting their employer committee back going, uh, which is essentially the same thing, so what we're gonna do is partner with the DOL to put on quarterly manufacturing, uh, specific employer committee meetings.
Cause they had phased that out, right?
They did, it kinda, kinda felt way.
So they're bringing it back?
They are, they're bringing it back and, um, so what we're gonna do is, um, every quarter, the JDA will sponsor like a manufacturers a specific thing, we'll bring in somebody that's kinda geared towards the manufacturers. But one of the things that I heard from the manufacturers, I don't, I don't think they want to lose, they just enjoy the networking with other manufacturers. So we'll probably look at maybe doing, uh, bi-annual manufacturers network dinner or lunch where, you know, we'll pay for them to come, we'll buy them a cater I say cater, buffet lunch, ten dollars a person, kinda thing, so we'll, uh, we'll do that for them, just so they can kinda maintain that, uh, regional, uh, cross-county networking that they seem to enjoy from the manufacturing council. Um, and that's about all I had for you, uh, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me or?
If, yeah. We would like for you to come, you know, I know you do a yearly report, but just try to do it quarterly, you know?
Okay, yeah, if, Don, just whenever you guys allow me to just, um.
We didn't contribute, you know, to that.
I understand.
Keep everything, especially with things, things, we wanna start changing, growing, and so maybe every four, you know, coming in, year of model or month, every, whatever, come in and give us what's.
Sure, what would you say your, your biggest project that you've brought in to any of the four counties, not just Day County?
Well, in, in terms of, uh, uh, job numbers, like landed projects or are you, just talking about looking in the area?
No, that's part of landing and actually building and our employees working.
Well, uh, I mean, the, the, I guess for us, the biggest win we've had as a region, uh, was. Well, I mean, the, I guess for us, the biggest win we've had as a region would be audio. The reason I say that is it's right now, it's only about seventy people working there, but their starting wage is eighteen dollars an hour. This isn't Walker County. But the biggest reason for me why that's a big win is because it allowed Walker County to execute the option on the public land and pave in a road to that publicly owned industrial park, put utilities underground, put the substation in there, there's a rail spur in there. And the only thing they're really lacking is great at pad sites. And if you talk to, when we take these site selection consultants around the region, that's one of the things they stress was publicly owned industrial property. Because in the southeast, that's something that's really unique across the country is in the southeast, you see public authorities owning property and they're able to reduce the rate and they kind of write that off as an incentive to the company. So, they see that as cash in their pocket if you can kind of reduce the rate. Because public authorities, they're not out to make, turn a profit on the land, they just want to sell it for what they put into it, basically. And then sometimes you have to go a little bit, reduce the price below what you put in, just to kind of.
So, the name of this company is what?
Audio Plastics is a subsidiary of Washington Penn Plastics.
And have you had anybody you directed to Dade County or brought to Dade County to look around?
No, sir, we have been involved with some of the meetings with some existing industry and that's really a trend. We see most of our existing industry continue to put money back into the plants. We have, like I said, it was a recent project that's no longer located in Dade County, but it was seventy jobs, I think it was about twenty million dollar investment. The other bigger one that we saw from the Chicago trip, I mean, it was a two billion dollar investment, seven hundred jobs. We're still in the mix for that. I think there's some supplementations that are going to prevent Dade County from going any further. But, you know, it's just one of those things where it's just kind of like fishing, sometimes you get it, sometimes.
And for the people that are here that haven't heard you before, there are benefits to being a member of the JDA other than you guys just bringing us in, right?
Yes, sir. So, financially, the state of Georgia offers a five hundred dollar increase to the job tax credit bonus. Dade County is a tier-three community, which means your statutory credit is twelve hundred and fifty dollars. So, essentially, it's a forty percent increase up to seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. And what that, what that is, it's not money coming back to the county, but it's money coming back to industry and the county to expand or locate.
So, it's helping businesses that are here and possible businesses that look at Dade County.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And if we call out the JDA, that would immediately go away.
That would, it would go back on its own, yes, sir.
Any questions, any other questions?
Thank you, Keith.
Oh, thank you, thanks for coming. Move down to number seven. This is memorandum of understanding with the Columbia Crisis Center Resolution Order 10-18. This is just a renewal. Don, does that need to work down?
Yes. This is something we do annually for the Crisis Center. A lot of Dade, two Chautauqua counties, and Robin and I were discussing this earlier. We have three other, well, two primarily other groups that we do this with. It's our victim assistance funds. Victim assistance funds are generated through courts based off different types of cases. I'm not sure which kinds of cases they are, but, uh, Georgia has set a certain fee that the defendant has to pay. And once that's paid, then it goes through the court system. Those, the funds hopefully come to county, then we divvy, and it's from all five courts, we pay five courts. The city count, we have city, juvenile, superior magistrate, and pro-veteran. And then those five courts pay annually, then we turn around and then we divvy it up five different ways. One is the district attorney, and then we added him a couple, three years ago when the Dutch came and he had a presentation. And the four points, I should have wrote that down. There's three, there's a couple others. So, anyway, we don't have a agreement with those, so we really need to.
Some sort.
Annual or otherwise, but we'll work on that in the meantime. This is through, I think this is Kristi Lawson, is that her? She's always very faithful, she sends us every year just to update their, they prefer to use a memorandum of understanding, but we have usually a memorandum of memorandum of understanding of companies and agreements of sorts, but it's all bad source. Makes it legal.
Any questions? Nothing new, really, just something we did, like you said, you. Move down to number eight. Resolution Order 11-18. This is going to our LME, local maintenance and improvement grant application, and Don's almost finished with that.
Yes. We, uh, it's, Billy, yeah?
No.
Here, easily here, anyway. It's a little bit different this year if you look at this multicolored page. We, if, without T-Splus, you know, since that failed last year, we, we have applied for up to, the material cost is nine hundred and two thousand dollars now. I don't know that we'll get that, but you don't ask, you don't receive. And, but with T-Splus, if a T-Splus were to pass, that would bring, there would be an additional request made of one million six hundred, one million sixty-nine thousand and some change. So, that's the difference T-Splus will and could possibly make, it would be over a million extra dollars in road maintenance and paving. And you can see the list there, I mean, it is what it is. The largest one on the list is Hell's Gap, I mean, that comes in at around four hundred thousand.
Plus.
Plus, yeah. So, and so this list is by districts, we are working on that, we'll get this out to you as soon as we get the final application.
This will be, by the next meeting.
This will authorize the application, we'll get it out to.
But you'll have a pause before.
Yes, yes, yes. And then it's up to them to determine how much we're going to get, you know. If we ask for it or not, they may send, I doubt it, but.
Any questions? Then I'll continue, I hope we get the four of them out. Move down to number nine, this is Resolution Order 12-18. Family Resource Agency Head Start Program. This is a contract with those people that actually brought their attention just a few weeks ago, and they actually kind of went to sleep since October. I think they've known it since October, anyway. So, Robin, I think you've been working on it.
I have, this is an agreement with the agency that provides the Head Start Program. And really, we, our involvement with the cost of the county is we lease them the land on which they're building. They provide the service there, and really it's just the land that they use, the property there by the senior citizens is the only expense that we have there. So, originally, this was a proceeding agreement, it was a fifteen-year agreement, and I think it expired, I don't remember the number. And so, this is to bring that back up to date, it's a five-year agreement. What, three-year agreement with two, two additional one-year terms that could be added, so.
Any questions? All right, let's move down to number ten. This is ordinance number zero-four, zero-five, eighteen. This is established with the city-county historic, joint historic preservation commission. Don, is this going to serve as, is this for information or?
Well, we, we have been working, we've been on the agenda for a long time. We finally found the guru of Georgia, at least northwest Georgia, on that history, about two days ago. And spoke with him, we spoke with some training folks last week about this, and so, and then we met with the mayor, and I think we're really close to getting it out. That's why I went in and put oh-four, oh-five, eighteen, that's, that would be representative of April, and hopefully the final reading. We could have pushed through a model ordinance tonight, but we're waiting to see if there is another joint ordinance in the municipality or county somewhere, so we don't have to be, but if we have to, it's not a big deal. They're, you know, they work with us and it's the Historic Preservation Division. And like most state agencies, they've cut down to, I think she said, three people. So, we've made two free phone calls, once today, yesterday, and I think Robin called last week. She hasn't gotten back with us yet, but I'm sure she will when she can, so. So, yes, it's a tabling once again tonight. However, I think this month we'll have a, finally have the draft, the first reading. This is a new reading for you, if you're ever looking at it, but, uh, it's got a lot, quite a few possibilities. This will also lead us to become a certified local government, I think, well, aren't we already? You have to, this is one of the requirements, to have a, have a historic preservation commission in place for the county and the city. We're qualified county government, but we've, for whatever reason, never been certified.
Through, through DCA?
It's through DCA. All that does is open us up to additional federal funding grant opportunities.
Any questions? Don, okay. Move down to number eleven, this is kind of a piece of loss, public hearings and meetings, meeting places. Now, as far as getting, having it on the ballot, you already started that.
We have, well, we, yeah, and we're going to have to move pretty quickly in the next couple of meetings. The city is ready to, to partner with us again on this. We're probably looking about the same amount of breakout, and that's twenty, twenty-five, seventy-five, kind of seventy, one-seventy-five. The city would be point-two-five percent. And this, this is a presentation that was presented by ACCG. Just basically lays out some really great information about what it is, how it came about. There's, if anyone's interested, you can go online, just Google ACCG, T-Splus, and it'll come up and give you a little thing you can watch. Very helpful. Our next step will be, we already had a meeting with the mayor, which is the first step, which we already did before, but we hadn't do it yet. And so, that's, we've got that checked off, the next one, I think, will be the IGA, is it the IGA or the, oh, probably IGA. And we already have an IGA from last time, intergovernmental agreement. So, that should be difficult. My last couple pages is what we're working on. And I spoke with Alex yesterday, he's been talking to the city commissioner about this. And the unfortunate part of the T-Splus is, if you want to look at it this way, you cannot, it is not taxed on fuel. Fuel is not taxed. That's a big thing in Dade County with I-24.
So, it's probably, they're going to revenue it this plus. It's going to bring in as much revenue.
He will not.
That's not as a top number, man. Cause of fuel.
What all, what all can you use a T-Splus for?
Transportation.
Anything related to.
The relative.
Anything transportation, even public transportation, anything.
I got, I got a friend that has a business here in Dade County, he, I'll talk to him about it, and he's totally against it because one of his big sales is if he's got the same merchandise that a store in Chattanooga does, and it's a thousand dollars, right now, he can say, well, you come down here and buy it, you get seven percent interest for it, you buy Chattanooga's ten percent. So, some of the local business owners would resist that. But what would be our argument to them to justify that? Because he told me, he said, well, our roads are in good shape now, which is true, they're decent, but.
Yeah, and we're paying for it, our tax, our property taxpayers are paying for it. This, this, they totally, the low off of it, our taxpayers, they're paying property tax. And that way, everyone in the whole country is big benefit for our roads.
We could actually.
We can reduce our, we can reduce the milli rate to seventy degrees.
Possibly, possibly. Just look.
Maybe not dollar for dollar, but. And you look at Billy right now, in Bushak's, it's gone, it's totally gold. We're down to a hundred thousand dollars for that piece of equipment, or maybe more or less, but around a hundred thousand.
And any T-Splus, any Splus, anybody that pays the expense of pennies.
Right.
Would only be three cents difference between here and Chattanooga.
Looking back to small business owners. Looking back to under tab eight here, we just talked about if we, without T-Splus or with T-Splus. Well, if you look at the top, it says labor fuel cost, that's Dade County portion. So, that's seven hundred thousand dollars that can then come out of T-Splus, not out of Splus or property taxes, which is current with us, both.
And we could pay possibly.
Well, it's not, paving.
And we, and we actually talked about another interest room in the north end.
That would be the state, that would be the state, the state project, because you got a percent.
Which would eliminate some traffic in the neighborhood.
Sure. Eliminate law and truck train.
The big thing would be paving these roads like Hell's Gap, County Road Number Six, Burkholder. These are big, long roads that just will cost young and fortunate, and that's why they don't get paid.
Well, actually, they're paid.
Well, you pay them, yeah, but it's.
But, but Hell's Gap, Freddie, be paid. I think the last time that we had this up for a vote, we didn't do a very good job of explaining it, so.
And that's the purpose of bringing.
One paper that needs to be added.
Right, it wasn't a big turnout, but we didn't do a very good job of, it wasn't explained very well at all.
What I would recommend, there's nothing to vote on, another reason to sign here is one for information. And to encourage y'all to set some public hearings, maybe community hearings, community forums, ask the people what they want. So, you know, I mean, once you've set those meetings, we'll publicize those. Multiple, I mean, all of you can go, one of you can go, it doesn't matter where you want.
This is no tax on fuel.
There is no tax on fuel.
Any questions? Try to get there, that's for sure. Okay, move down to number twelve, this is an agreement for fire protection and rescue services with each of our volunteer firefighters. This is more for information too, because it lasts quite a bit, we're like a lot having that.
We have Rodney here.
Yeah, Rodney.
Oh, Rodney, I must have gone the front row. The agreement for fire protection is coming up, it expires March thirty-first, however, I'd like to feel if we pass this the next meeting, which is thirty days, because we don't have time to get it out, distributed, get it signed, so that we can continue payment. Because as of March first, we can no longer pay the fire departments to supplement, but we have an agreement in place. So, we need to get that in place, as soon as possible. They won't stand in line, they need those checks to buy fuel or whatever.
The state, that's long.
That's, oh, yeah, that's.
That's not ours.
Rodney will start that tomorrow. So, the.
Can we put in here that you have to provide rosters with the certified firefighters, keep them up to date?
We talked about that earlier today, and, yes.
They have to do that.
We're doing it now. We're doing it, but it's not written down, it needs to be written.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not on, well, I mean, you know, we're writing on our, according to what Mary's found out in the state.
But you're getting close, though, they're getting close to it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's not like we've not been working on, it's just a.
What I'm going to say is the fire chiefs are, they have to be the first Monday night of each month, and I'm sure they would.
We'll be working on that.
Well, you might, you might need a call meeting, though, I mean, if it comes down to it, it's sad, because it's just, you know, just y'all there. So, you know, you might have to call a meeting if it comes down to it, or if that's all it takes to finalize it.
You know, there's some stuff on our, we got to look at, like the state changes.
Right. And the state's also coming up this month too. And one of the things Tim Sharpe of Westboro talked about, if we give the same, once we give that, that report of our certified posts, Mary wants to do it every month. Well, those people are certified for a year until we, and they got a whole year to get their training in. Then we resubmit all the training to the standards of training, and they're good for another year. So, we shouldn't, well, we have to give a new list every time we cut down?
We need it, because if someone were to die, or someone were to come off, or someone were to add, we have to know about that. I hope we get paid, you'll have to pay for them until they're coming off.
But I think the chiefs now do that, we add, remove, when somebody comes off or quits or fires, but.
Yeah, that's all we need.
That's one of the things I heard from Tim today, is that aggravation.
Well, once it's, I mean, if doesn't change, it's just made positive in hand. Well, it's, I mean, if that's a change, it's just made composite, and handed particularly, I mean. I mean, really, literally, if you have a list that's scratched, then they, if they're no longer.
They're certified.
But I think that's, that's why it needs to be written down.
You gotta form a star with.
Yeah, the thing is, we're providing now another service. It's county tax money, unpaid, unfunded mandate. But through this cancer policy, if they're, they're getting a benefit, it's not written down, and it's not in any agreement. That's what we need to fix that.
Well, if they had to delete one, then they could just delete it, mark it out, and have one if they one came in, just add to it.
Sure.
You wouldn't have to do a whole paperwork, that would.
Okay, that's more information, but by the, by the next meeting, we'll have, we'll be voting, as we got it. All right, let's move down to number thirteen. This is a request for modification of the alcohol beverage control. From the alcohol control board pertaining to the golf. Came several weeks ago, they were wanting us to give our the alcohol board to give them a variance where they can actually sell liquor over there. I've met with the sheriff a couple times, we've talked about it. He's, he's, you know, went over and looked at the roads and was saying, you know, and he, he's totally against it because of the road, the population of that area, the narrowness of the road, and so, I'm, I'm set on standing on his side. And Robin, do we have, or do we have to say so ourselves, or is it alcohol control? Are they coming for us just as a blessing?
Yeah. Let, let me see, I'm a little bit unclear. Has he applied for a license that was turned down? Or has he not applied?
He came and, and requested it, Mary, after moving up to Wood.
It'll be served in a type of snatcher.
Because right now, he can't, he can't, he knows he can't, because it's strictly written.
Right.
There's no, on county roads, there is no license.
Oh, well, I don't see how he could fit to the off-premises consumption laws. There's too many things there. I just don't see how that, he can do that, the off-premises consumption. I think he'd be much closer to if you were to go take a few steps, and that makes sense when we talk to him about it. I, I've never, I've not spoken with him personally, because it's kind of out of my role.
Has alcohol board, have you involved in it at all?
I've spoken with, had nothing about it.
Way, way on.
Amazing.
Way on, people that you want to sell beer in the clubhouse for people to drink on the course.
Yeah.
That's what, they're ringing the wrong now, brown bag.
Absolutely.
But what thing is, if he sells, he doesn't have any food or anything there. You gotta have that type of situation.
Right. He, in my mind, he would have to have an off-premises license, which would mean that they could not drink within the clubhouse. They would have, well, there's several sets he could do, but I think, I think that one, he could be very close to the off-premises.
I don't, I don't know why he's even asking. This would be like a beer store, and they're just licensed, so I thought it's not a liquor, a drink request.
Right, as I understand it, it's on the front.
So, what they, what I understand, they're brown bagging liquor now. You know, and, and beer.
Most of them would be beer, but.
Yeah.
That's what they're doing now.
If he weren't going to obtain a license, they could no longer brown bag. I mean, he's going where, I don't know, if he licensed or not. But I don't, I just think off-premises licenses available to, I mean, the off-premises were similar to, meaningful to what you're saying. I think that one.
Most places like Chicago, Chattanooga, and Lake, and they sell beer in their clubhouse, they, they don't let you bring liquor, because they want you to buy from them.
Right.
Here, since he, I mean, any local golf course, if you bring a cooler, bring what you want.
Okay, so if they buy at the clubhouse.
If what?
If it's, if it's certainly bought at the clubhouse.
Right.
And not anywhere on the course, then it still be considered on premises to me, because it's still part of.
They're buying eight to ten beers at a time to take it on.
What, what I would suggest is that if there were a different lease for the clubhouse versus the golf course. Is actually, he's leasing the property, he's not, he doesn't own it, am I right about that?
There are mandates, there are mandates, that's what I understand.
Oh, I, I think that's, that's possible. I, I can see how that could work, but I, I don't want to speak for the ABC board, but really, the local decisions within, not, not with us.
Well, we can't give anybody permission to sell bottles of liquor.
Not without.
We can't, we can't give anybody permission to sell alcohol. We can take service.
Unless we actually change this.
Yeah, or to actually have a, a package store, you could do several things.
That would have to go back to the referendum.
That's right.
The referendum.
So, this is just asking of.
He's actually here for.
Want to sell six packs, six packs of beer. Why, I don't know why it's coming for us. It might be a.
But I would hope that the ABC board would look and see what kind of Pandora's box you're opening. For the next tomato come in, you know, you start making.
Anything, probably, really, I don't know that that, the only difference is he's wanting to keep people from bringing it in.
And he's on a county road.
That's what I'm saying, if they could, if they could do that, it's nothing really up to us.
But everybody is. Not on, not on the county, red, state road.
Their pop is some more. Oh, yeah, but that's what I mean, that's, that's the thing to open up, you know, is, okay, he's not on the state road. That, that golf course not on the state road now. I want to sell it, and I'm not on the state. Because that's a beer board, if, if they can skirt the law on theirs, but I just, you know, I'm certainly not ready to vote on that.
I'd like to, what would do you give the vote, because Robin's telling us it's their, that's their call.
That's, that's right. I mean, they'll, we could amend our ordinance, I suppose, but, but really, whether or not we grant, our license is granted underneath the ordinance, that's their.
That's strictly their.
Yeah. I probably need, but maybe get some direction from, from the commission. I mean, I, I've spoken with Patty about this issue. I've not talked to the person there, but I really found it was out, out of my place to do so really, and I don't know if the commission would like me.
See, when he came in my office one day, the guy that's over the management group, he was, he was, he was talking about the quit. He was talking about actually having a bar, so I only agree inside, and doing the whole line of rules right there, you know. As we said, all the other golf courses, they manage, they did, they done that. And that's been months, months ago. And then I told him, so, you know, we need to start with alcohol board, you know, that's, you know, that's.
That's right.
And so now, now they've changed it, but still, regardless, it's their call, it's the alcohol boards.
And this makes it appear, I mean, from, from this, that he's asking for spirits, not just beer.
I don't see that.
Where do you see the spirits?
Well, he says, we will not have a bar, but sell the product, and what product, who can sell.
Well, here's his going down.
The county says we would expect two people to consume a maximum of six beers.
Right. He, he does mention beer down there, but here's said we wouldn't have, so.
Been to a lot of golf courses, mostly don't sell liquor.
No, they don't, but that's what I'm saying, when you say golf ball.
I'm not saying there's not a few out there that sell some liquor, but.
I swung like I had before. When you missed a ball.
Have you ever seen a, an open ball that a golfer?
Not at a golf.
I think.
But a lot of them do, they go around and, you know, they take it to you and.
Is there any way we could hit it? I mean, I don't know.
But that's still their, that's ABC board's calling, to do all that.
I think let's go ahead and figure out what they need to do.
I think, yeah, they just need to bring the alcohol, you know, things to come to.
If you can, Robin, since you're their attorney, too, you need to go and meet, meet their meeting with Tim and give them some guidance on it, you know. So, that's something, that's what we need to do, so. Okay. Any other questions on that or comments? If not, we've got one more, now added, the ordinance, R, dash zero, six, dash eighteen. Don, you want to go on to that?
Yeah, last month, we passed a resolution requesting Georgia General Assembly to adopt the local legislation for Dade County, Georgia to collect the hotel, hotel excise tax. And it's under OCGA forty-eight, dash thirteen, dash fifty-one B. They call this a fifty-one B resolution and excise tax. So, what that is, is outlines exactly how the hotel, hotel tax will be expensed. And so, we've, we sent this in. Senator Mullis requested that these top legislation go through the House because of the rules. And so, we introduced this through John Deffin Mull, and he was met on the floor this past Monday, I think, by the Legislative Council. And the Legislative Council had a question about our wording in the original, said, shall be expended, expended, yeah, for tourism conventions and trade shows by destination marketing organization. Just so you know, that's like the chamber, the chamber I saw. Or through contracts with an entity other than a destination marketing organization, as defined by OCGA forty-eight, dash thirteen, dash fifty-one. Okay, so, the only thing they ask is that, and that was in two places on this resolution. They are now asking us to please write, spell that out, OCGA, to the tune of amount so expended shall be expended only through a contract or contracts with the state, the Department of State Government, State Authority, a convention, and the authority created by local act of the General Assembly for, for a municipality, or a private sector nonprofit organization, or through a contract or contracts with some combination of some entities, except that amount expended for purposes C and D may be so expended in any otherwise lawful manner. Don't you love attorneys? So, anyway, that's what they asked us to do.
So many bad.
Sure, well, we can do that, because I, I mean, it's basically saying the exact same thing, just spells out where we put.
Drawn radiation.
As defined by OCGA. That's one, it really, in my opinion, we didn't materially change this. However, the meeting was tonight, so this was yesterday, and I thought, well, it's just a way to fix this.
Yeah, we need to add it, I mean, they called the other day, and he was on, on the floor. You could hear people, I need that guy, you know, people, I'm speaker from the Don, and says. Like Don said, it's not a great big deal, it's just actually putting a paragraph to explain what a sentence, what a sentence was in there, and what it meant.
It is to one Legislative Council.
That's right.
Attorney at the General Assembly, but.
Is everybody on board, right?
Yes.
You got anything else, Robin, you want to add?
I don't know.
Don't have anything, so we'll go into the general, our work session, and talk about five minutes, or so, and then we'll come back and get ready for me.